She's a major researcher.
Are we running? Yeah. No, I don't know. You called the video? Come on, before we just let. Young County Court now comes, uh, Young County Commissioners Court will now come to order. At record meeting, Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty, it is nine thirty-two AM. Make note that the meeting was posted in the manner by the time present and all members of the court are present. And if it's convenient, please stand or if in case of a committee.
Let's pray. Father, this is for the forty, just want to thank you, Father, for every day, Father, and for this opportunity to serve in this capacity. And Father, we just ask, Father, that you be with us today, Lord, as we make decisions. And just pray for wisdom and guidance and direction and all that we say and all that we do. Father, I pray, Father, for this virus going around, and Father, I pray, Father, that it would be abolished, Father, and it would be with those that do have it, Father, and pray for it, even. Father, be with those that lost love, and Father, in this time, Father, for comfort during this time. Father, be with our leaders, both in faith, both state, both of them, with great unity. And Father, we ask for your word, that be in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one unity.
Item number three, both comments, announcements, presentation, the no action items that I do have listed on there. Masonic Lodge, thirteen, thirteenth annual auction, March fourth thing.
Yes, sir, we sent out more than thirteen hundred mailers to previous buyers, so we expect another large buying crowd again. Uh, we do need to get anything that we might have on that list as soon as possible so that we can get it out, so people will know they're coming to buy. So we get it advertised as, as appropriate. So if you have anything, please do, we'll predict you finding something to sell, so.
Do y'all know of anything?
Anything from the county, when they, two weeks before the auction, so.
I'm going to place that generator that came from the sheriff's law enforcement center in the auction, sell in.
Is it run?
Yep. I don't know, do you think? And, and it's inside building.
Where's the auction, they close?
At the old egg bar, down in the ballpark.
I guess I go ahead and run an ad, then if we are gonna have some surplus items, maybe list some.
Is that on inventory at all anywhere?
I don't know, it should be.
Is it retained or we salvage that building?
It should be not, but.
What do you need, or just make them up?
Yeah, if you would, yeah, I'll get some more stuff. I don't know, because it's the kind of thing of some old equipment, we've been hunting, hunting down.
Get my space back.
Was it Genrak?
Yeah, Genrak, it is. It's a big professional. We thought at one time we'd fix it up for an emergency power source for the county. Might as well keep, upkeep that thing, but we better just rent one if we need any more.
Is it a seventy-something, you know, a seventy-something?
Uh, judge, my bill, got any more, was that, was that ever replaced once the building was remodeled or anything like that, do you know?
Uh, I believe it was, probably in the late eighties, early nineties.
I know that as it said over there, it was prescribed to have a normal annual run, I think, to maintain the system.
Water jet, but it is only, but it would be pretty, probably pretty good.
Ten thousand, thanks. Okay, we did.
Take a picture of whatever it said.
If I send you anything, show a picture.
I'll like email.
Okay, we're gonna make note there that we received them, though. Hotel occupancy tax, one for the Ingle Side Ranch, seven fifty, and one for the Wildcat Ranch, twenty-nine eighty to twenty-five. Continue to come in very good, those things.
What about the egg day?
Egg day, yeah. Young County Egg Life Day, April the twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, don't have time for that yet, but.
It'll be continued to, like it was last year. We'll have coffee and donuts in the morning, and then Farm Bureau will serve lunch. And then as far as I know, we've confirmed Corbett Law to come speak, and then I just need to gather up one more speaker, and then we'll be offering three CEUs for that event.
Or will it be all together?
No, as far as, it's just me, but Young County.
And you said it's gonna be different than what it was last year, right? Speakers?
Yes, different speakers.
Okay, um, about, I failed to get it, though. And so, I, my, for them to jail, but they've had a noted year on this, this part, we don't have anybody there to report about yet.
No, but Travis was kind, I talked to him this morning about me.
Anything else? Well, I will move on to item number four, consider county clerk minister previous meeting, January the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Some of them. Okay, he's doing a very good job.
Call it fair. Okay, item number five, is considered auditors, body amendments, and vouchers.
I have vouchers this morning. Always have vouchers. Uh, total is hundred and seven thousand, eight oh eight and seven cents, and out of the general is fifty-three thousand, twelve dollars and two cents. And there is Dom's, uh, two cents, and there is Dom's butane included.
Some of them. Thank you.
Oops, done.
Approved, signed. Motion by Commissioner Prud, second by Commissioner Sykes to approve vouchers paid, vouchers payable, uh, as presented, all in favor? That'd be four one, four oh one. Noting that Commissioner Wiley has some things. Item number six, consider attorney's report, I don't, securities pledge, anything there?
One, one lead, one lead, one hundred fifty-two, one fifty-five.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Prud, to approve attorney's report, I don't, securities pledge, all in favor? The next item on there is, uh, let's see, item number six, that's item number seven, is considered extension agents, Savannah Williams, fourth, request reimbursement, um, two, two thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars sixty-four cents, and Kenny Baron, at one ninety-one forty-eight. They'll open up a part next report, I suppose.
I move that we approve the request for reimbursement.
Thank you. Sure, will that change the Wiley's, to have seen this? Why?
I don't know.
Motion by Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Wiley, if I'm correct, approve, uh, reimbursement as requested, all in favor? Here, okay. Savannah, Kenny, if you want to up there and give. Report on all of the round fifty.
What, sir?
Did you have any activity?
Actually, we got a little activity. As y'all know, Savannah and Egg Life, they can ask us to come and visit with y'all several times a year, they like us to come at least four times a year. This past year, two of those towns have been through four-H functions, such as a proclamation signing and a volunteer recognition. And then, um, Judge, and I, this will be spring, and Savannah, of course, in October. And so this is kind of our wrap-up for twenty nineteen, uh, these are just the reports that were submitted to State with our annual, um, reports. And then my achievement report, and then Savannah, uh, she's new, so she agreed to submit her next year to, um, to mine, so it's kind of one-sided document-wise, but basically, um, you know, we met all of our requirements appropriately, and more in some cases. We utilized our volunteers significantly through the program planning committees, task force committees, which are particularly programs, and we're blessed with participation on that. And in fact, I would say maybe growing participation with actual results and, um, more than just the helping of the planning, but helping the implementation for these programs as well. So, uh, we're excited to, to move forward with our four-H volunteer program. We've been able to increase, um, our projects this past year, uh, and through that growth, we have seen our volunteers increase as well. Of course, when we have a volunteer body to help provide programs, we're able to do more, and therefore we're able to reach more kiddos by opening up more opportunities for them. And so on top of our basic four-H traditional programs, um, of course, there are family community health programs, and additional resources, and then we have some of our other programs, such as robotics kicked off in spring, uh, veterinary science kicked off in April. So we had a request for leather work, which was an old-school four-H project years, I mean, twenty-plus years ago, and the same is a little bit spicy and tricky on that, but we have, uh, launches and existing with that. So again, offering new opportunities that we're reaching out past our current four-H membership right now, members to grow and get more kiddos involved, so. And four-H is doing really well, and on the adult programming side, um, you'll see several reports, it just kind of outlines all the various programs that I do in regards to health and nutrition primarily focused. There's some family-focused, some elder care-type fall conventions, but I get to partner with a hospital on, and some other organizations here in town. So, again, great partnerships, which are key in a lot of what we do and being able to collaborate and work together. So, if there's anything in particular that I have questions about, pray otherwise, State has documented very well for you, so, um, you know, if there's anything in particular, and all that Savannah can share, what her goals are and coming up and pushing up to.
Okay, Savannah.
We've kind of already hit the next big program that we'll be conducting, which is our Act Day, and we've decided that through the help of Jovo, we've been able to confirm Corbett Law to come and speak to us. And I'm gonna gather up another speaker, I'm not, we haven't quite decided how much time we're gonna need, but we're gonna keep it between that two, ten and two o'clock time window, and still be able to offer all three CEUs. Right now, I'm going through stock shows, which we've had a great run so far, I'm very proud of all of our kids. Fort Worth Guild Show, we had the Champaign Chester Reserve Champion Bowl, and, um, in San Antonio, we had a good look, we got six places across, and several, um, pulled back, and then the same at Kerrville. I think we ended up with like a second place, and then another top ten cross break. So that's all I'm excited for those kids. This next week, I'm gonna wrap up in San Antonio with the Sheep and Goat Shows, and then as we move into February and March, and wrap up the school year, I'll be working with Newcastle and, um, Miss Beaver and her third grade class for our LG EG program. We're gonna get that started, I think we've got the supplies bought, we're gonna get those boxes put together, and so go through the first little school there. Oh, yeah, sorry, Learn, Grow, Eat, Grow, uh, Eat Go, it's a program where we get to plant, um, vegetables, and there's weekly lesson plans, and these kids get to go through the process of selecting vegetables and, um, forming them, and utilizing the nutrients, and learning about healthy cooking, and then kicking it off with physical activity at the end. It's a really neat program for, for our third graders, and I think there are like eighteen kids that are gonna be involved doing it, so that's really exciting. And then, that's about it for this spring, as far as I can, I can get handout back going around.
Yeah, well, maternity leave in a couple months while she's finishing out the show, and then we'll kick off with our Welcome to the Real World, our money and show.
Oh, yes.
Safety Day, with all high school students, either night, two, twelve, it's what they say. We'll have one location here in Graham, one location in Allee, and then we'll also be doing our Safety Day again, which will be, uh, in April, and, um, how that all finalized with our sessions, and they'll be all schools again, third grade targeted as well, and that's through the progressive Act Day grant funding that provides us our shirts and our bags, and then the local organizations that support our sessions, and then, um, our local bond areas. And we donated our lunch this year, so they'll be, could be on site for all the kids, teachers, and volunteers, so. Spring is a very busy time, of course, being on the road constantly in the spring, and then us getting ready for our curriculum enrichment, and then, even on the four-H side of it, that we've got some new projects coming up, but shooting sports, you know, even though our archery's been going year-round, they'll see a full force come in because the first weekend of March will be April, will be our state indoor archery now, which is, and so when we tend to do that, we'll see another influx of kiddos again, and so, um, our goal there is, um, you know, get volunteer management, we have a great coach, we have David Cook, Ian Thomas, turn in this, they're currently working with our four-H program for shooting sports archery, and they're having to, not having to, they're willing to work with our kids twice a week to be able to space that out, so that they have kids have more time to shoot during that timeframe. And then they're also been going on, uh, to contests and traveling together, and there's gonna increase in that, and then we've also got some great passion and things happening in the virtual and shotting as well, so we'll see something there to. And then just a little tidbit, just to throw that out there, you know, as we're growing, um, you know, the, the ability to meet at various locations is becoming harder and harder, because they put in the back of your head, you know, ever opportunity was, kind of building donated, or a facility that we could have meetings in, would be a big advantage child program, because right now, um, we are lucky to have a partnership with the county arena, but that often changes in regards to when they have events that they can bring in, at a time reschedule, uh, which sometimes, you know, when we reschedule, we tend to lose those participation numbers, so, um, just being able to have a facility after hours, so it's convenient, but doesn't, as I said, always require an agent to be present, um, to be able to have, so that kind of gets sometimes. Overlong for all the meetings that are happening in four-H, and so anyways, keep that in mind.
I might, I might Savannah hang on an early off program, so it's cheap pretty, cheap pretty nice of them. Projects and momentum and, uh, different scheduling and things, and I think, weren't, did you grow up in Oconom?
Yes, sir.
So she's relatively local.
I think the thing that's interesting about men county that we don't realize is, um, county size, you know, we're a little bit smaller than our big counties, a little bit bigger than our super bowl counties, but in regards to participation numbers, in regards to what we're offering in our county, surpasses majority of the county's.
Right, it's true, right.
So, um.
Very strong.
We're proud of it.
Couple of things, I can mention, the gardening nutrition cooking program, is that a replacement for pack to plate? Is that anything there?
No, it's actually, it's just another component of it, uh, it's, you know, we probably need to do a better job of creating that along with the pack to plate initiative, but that's our youth program, where we're also provided grant funding through our Better Living or Tech, and so, uh, we were able to get, I think I gave about seven hundred dollars a month to gardening programs, and then with Savannah, working with Newcastle, we were able to get another four hundred and purchase her beds. And so we also have that wealth from adult gardening program going into community garden in Allee with the House of Mercy, and so they will be doing an in-house onsite, quite large, um, garden area, so that will also be a focus for the special program.
There are discussions, like, trying to combine the gardening projects that go on, how to precinct one of the barn for the probation department, if you helping out with that, with their gardening effort?
We do have the paths, um, in regards to our resources, they, we have a good work relationship, and we've done the paths, and they're open to us, and in regards to working together with kids and so forth, there's new restrictions there, and so, other than just our, our help, um, that's kind of more limited.
The four-H wall, kind of.
Yeah, the, the thing is, it's great with the probation, and we've worked together on various programs, um, in the past, um, but, you know, it's getting, she does a great job with all that she does, just not only the gardening component, it's just the canning, all of that, and the produce, and so, um, the only, the only hiccup with that is, um, it's all great resources for those kids coming in and out at different time periods, they never truly are there to full focus on the protein.
Also coming up to the NRA banquet, February twenty-second, I'm late, anyone who can attend, please show up, because we received a pretty healthy stop-in from, from NRA, and it's very important to our shooting sports.
Very important, in fact, um, it's because of that, uh, grant that we have the funds and have been provided the resources to be able to help our kiddos that are not able to participate in a project due to the financial, um, expenses it might take to purchase equipment, and so with that grant, we've been able to provide club or project equipment, um, along, as well as shells and bullets, or at least at a just kind of price to some degree, so. And I would say especially the archery, because of the, each year being able to, you know, increase our inventory a little bit with that project, is how we have the numbers that we have, because those several kids are able to purchase those, big investment, so if they start off not knowing, having ever participated, they can come in, use our club equipment, and then from there, they can keep our, using our club equipment, where they can then grow in their abilities and their, and their needs, maybe, um, change out their equipment.
Very good program.
I believe we're simulating, y'all do, live simulator, I think it's one of the important things.
Yeah, the Welcome to the Real World is a, is a huge one in our high schools, and that's one that, you know, council and prisons are all on board, the great thing about that situation, too, is that it involves a variety of volunteers that are not related to extension on a typical basis, it's normally, um, businesses, you work with the chamber, getting, um, help of getting volunteers in, and so they're seeing a lot of different faces, so they recognize the community, but maybe also they're more business-minded faces, too, so they know that, but this is, this is, this is serious, they're taking the time out to, for their day to come in and work with these kids, so.
My point is, support the NRA, because they support us not only in local monies, but in lobbying for our second amendment, and all kinds of good reasons, too. Twenty-second of February. At the arena, the art playroom.
Are you gonna kick that battery door back open?
Six o'clock, I believe.
What?
And we've got some new. But with that, that's where some of these programs have come from, and we're talking about the dating program, and drugs, and stuff like that, so.
You're sitting, aren't you?
Item number eight, consider Sierra Bay request for a resolution authorizing substitution and our withdrawal of securities, I think that's in, in fact, uh, those type there, um, security that's coming due on fifteenth this month, and they request that we release that, and they are, have a proposal on to replace it with, if it's larger. Okay, I'll move to approve the resolution authorizing substitution and our withdrawal of securities, Sierra Bay. Motion by Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Rogers to authorize a substitution withdrawal, all in favor? And here, five, oh. Okay, do we have anything with regard to?
Well, no, I talked to Travis, I've heard closer, he get a, a bid from Colwell, and he reached out, says there's only one guy that can get that complete bid, and he's been out, um, we thought we might have it, but he didn't, it's all I have is the Colwell, and, um, I talked to Billy this morning, because we had that one thousand dollar balloon up, and then, we're good right now, but we're gonna need to try to do something next week, to get something settled, because we do need to get that taken care of.
Okay, we won't do bypass that.
If you'd like to table it, and then maybe we get that one.
Bypass that next.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no action there, we'll, we'll move to our next regular handle. Item number ten, consider road crossing permits, Razz's telephone, uh, it's on Hutchins Road, and there's two locations, two certain permits, like this. We're gonna have two new residents out there, and we got a bore under the highway, or under the little black truck, so I recommend that we, I move that we, uh, accept this, uh, road crossing permit, board on it.
Two new homes in the same location?
They said. Remember the fire chief and all that, uh, we live out in the country, and his wife is gonna build a daughter house, and a son house.
I see why there's a.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Mr. Bobby, that right?
Yes.
To approve two locations on road crossing permits for Razz's telephone, Razz's telephone on Hutchins Road at two different locations, all in favor? And that is more of, yes. And weight fees, I suppose, yes.
You're fixing to start seeing a bigger influx of more police coming in from Razz's.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Very five, oh. Number eleven, I built this agenda, uh, in the resolve, I was using the form that had this historical commission on it, and I just failed to knock it off there, but it's, it's for next, next year, it's an odd number of years. Not anything to do on that, really. Item number twelve, is, uh, consider burn restrictions, regulations with fireworks. Considerations available doing those?
Mentioned fireworks, been new fireworks warehouse has been constructed, is that, I'd heard that that back part of that lot is county, and the front part is like the city, but.
You know, where the.
Where the crossing chicken eat?
Where the, where the building itself, where the building itself is setting?
Oh, where that right?
Is county, is county. The other, the front part.
The front part is city.
Where they're gonna be parking is the city, yes, and he does own that lot all the way back to, all along the road.
It's coming in down.
So, so what I heard was correct, isn't it?
Yes. That guy's slow.
So, that creek down there is county property?
Yes.
He comes up to that point?
Look, that line, it comes right up on the, um, on the west side of, uh, west side of sixteen, all the way to about the pine tree, and then jumps across there and takes us in, I think takes in Family Lane, that's what I had. So, yeah, I, I, I suppose I don't know, maybe that whole, almost whole lot, I think.
Three borders, I think.
So the city is going to be taxing the parking lot?
The parking lot.
County lot, county will be in the building?
Yeah. Buddy, like Buddy's house is in the city, but his backyard.
Yeah, I think everybody, yeah.
But, but backyard is in, in the county, so.
Okay, just wanted to be able to answer the questions correctly when people ask. There was some concern about it being that close to businesses and residents, you know, I'm not certain some of these old storey warehouses around town, they're everything, or just combustible explosives.
Is it gonna warehouse year-round?
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, in, uh, in that circumstance, that'd be, whoever's doing that would be, uh, ordinance is city, and the E P J would be applicable for our region. Well, in, uh, in that circumstance, that'd be, whoever's doing that would be the ordinances, city, and ETJ would be applicable from our agreement with them. We have, several years ago, we transferred our rights in that ETJ for subdivision rules and regulations to the city, we referred to the city.
Is that a two-mile ETJ?
I think so, yeah.
But the city, as far as I know, have been discussed, but there was no ordinance in place. Within restricted, I've had the conversation with firemen, what everybody, like...
You've got the promise of being like, for, for life...
I'd ask a question, since that work, how do you go there? Since that warehouse is gonna be in the county, who's gonna issue the building permit, who's gonna, who's gonna issue the building permit?
Well, it won't be the county, because we don't have the...
So they, so there won't be any inspection on this thing?
There will be.
There probably would be, it'd be applicable to the city's ordinances or...
Uniform code.
Rules and regulations within the ETJ, because we have deferred those to the city a long time ago.
I had that discussion with some con, local contractors, and I said it would be inspected. That's all. Wish your hopes of.
Yeah, we did.
Any else?
I would.
Well, I don't...
You're just don't...
I was wondering, I was there thinking, I like...
Well, then, we gotta cut them down.
You know, it won't be too long, that'll be, um, Texas Independence Day.
That's true.
March, March second.
Like Donald President's...
They don't sell them on breakfast day, or that either.
Did that not pass, they sell them year-round? But just on those prescribed days?
Those extinct holidays, uh, we haven't proved any of them yet, so.
No action.
No, it's not, I'm... Nothing to do. I wait now.
Kind of waiting, see if they're a little late.
Only five left for us to do then, darn.
So move.
A lot of business real quick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Andy, I'll go out there and collect money, people owe you money if you want to. Anybody out there in Tucson owe you money?
No. If you wanna harass the University of Arizona, you can definitely do that.
Weather off your credit.
It's Tucson, in my opinion, is like New York, Mexico. It's very dirty, like it's not, but there, there, there's parts of Tucson that are beautiful, like...
It's definitely built in the desert.
Yes, but so is Phoenix, it's just the way they maintain it, and the popular, the demographics of that area are very...
I think the wealth is required for Phoenix, too.
But if you can, there, there's a, uh, American hockey team at place there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the, the Tucson...
I think that's the theme of the deal, I think, while I was there, too.
I don't think...
What's the steakhouse in Tucson?
I don't know, yeah.
Steakhouse.
Any, I just can do that.
Any of them, yeah. It's all new from now, Southweston Street.
Yeah. See, I'm biased, when I say that Arizona has the best, it's better than Mexican, like Mexico, that's what it is, yeah.
Mexico must be good, it's great, Mexico.
Yeah, there's like lots of spice to it, though.
I'll give you a report in Tucson.
Okay, well...
Nickel, how are you, sir?
Pretty good, how are you?
So many cars, sir.
A few. These people got a little bit of money.
These people got a little bit of money. You keep an eye on that warehouse, of course. Close to me, I'm probably will, it is. You'll, you'll feel the shock, it's like, I'm trying to be all fantastic. Do they still find work in it, Texas, in Minnesota? Yep, I think it's, the county could prove that as a holiday.
Uh-huh.
So that's a little bit of control they got, that they gave us.
So, are we, can you shut the evidence?
Yeah, we have to, we have to.
I, I have somebody coming.
Yeah, look at that right, we should.
You know, it was like, uh, can you fix this?